Good morning, everybody. This is the 9:00 AM hearing Tuesday, March 16th, for the Committee on Pandemic and Disaster Preparedness. We're here in the State Capitol, Conference Room 309. So here are a number of Senate bills. First up is Senate Bill 1109 relating to the State Disaster Recovery Program. We have testimony from Alexandra Spouse, Office of the Governor.
Aloha Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Eli, and members of the committee. My name is Alexandra Slowess, and I serve as the State Disaster Recovery Coordinator for the Office of the Governor. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide a strong support for SB 1109, which establishes and institutionalizes the State Disaster Recovery Program and Framework. SB 1109 reflects work that has been underway for the last year and a half to stand up the state's recovery framework, which is modeled after FEMA's National Disaster Recovery Framework. The urgency created by the COVID-19 pandemic economic impacts accelerated these efforts and underscores the responsibility of the state to provide leadership, strategic planning, and implementation support for recovery statewide. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of SB 1109, and I will stand by if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony from Haime Administrator Myers.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Luke Myers. I am the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Haime stands on our written testimony in support of 11 bill in, excuse me, in support of Bill 1109. We do have one comment with regards to Section 2 that was recently added. The second sentence starts to identify further documentation under the recovery side of operations and planning. And we just asked for some communications if this bill goes forward in this fashion, tying that back to the state comprehensive emergency management, planning doctrine, and processes. I'm available for further discussions as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Colonel Logan, Department of Defense.
Aloha Chair Ichiyama and Vice Chair Eli and members of the committee. I'm Colonel Stephen Logan, the Deputy Agent in General for the State of Hawaii Department of Defense. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of Senate Bill 1109. We stand on our written testimony and are prepared to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you. That's all the folks we have signed up to testify via Zoom. Member Ward, any questions? Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 1107. This is relating to Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Testimony from Haime Administrator Myers.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Luke Myers. I'm the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Haime stands in support of Senate Bill 1107, and we're available for further discussions as necessary. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, your testimony from Department of Defense Colonel Logan.
Aloha Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Eli, and members of the committee. I'm Colonel Stephen Logan, the Deputy Agent in General for the State of Hawaii Department of Defense. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of Senate Bill 1107. We stand on our written testimony and are prepared to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you. That's all the testifiers we have signed up for 1107. Member, question?
Yes, Haime, question. Your budget, what is your total budget and what would this one also entail?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Are you referring to Haime's budget or funding specifically for hazard mitigation?
Both, actually.
Haime is funded through a number of federal grant funds and state funding. Annually, we receive about $3.5 million of general fund, which primarily goes to funding personnel and the state alert and warning system. We do receive about $3.5 million from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Emergency Management Performance Grant, which we pass through about a million through to the counties. We do receive other federal grants, and those are earmarked for specific programs that are identified. We have not asked for specific funding for this legislation. And following the governor's directive, we would put that forward during next session.
So you got about $9 million plus whatever you said the other grant is. Is that correct?
Estimated, yes, sir.
Five, seven, not nine. Well, give or take a little bit. Are you in the second stimulus with any funds that you haven't mentioned? $1.9 trillion. Have you guys got earmarked any of that stuff?
Specifically from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, we are aware that there are certain Emergency Management Performance Grants funds. There was a plus-up that was similarly included in the last stimulus. FEMA has not provided guidance to the states or locals on how that $100 million will be allocated at this time. So we are unsure if they are going to provide an application and when they will be doing that, sir.
Please make sure you get your fair share. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, there are no other questions. We're going to move on to Senate Bill 266. Testimony from Department of Human Services.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Kathy Betts, Director for the Department of Human Services. We stand on our testimony in strong support of SB 266. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone we have signed up to testify via Zoom. Member, any questions? Next, Senate Bill 1117, Making an Emergency Appropriations to the Office of the Governor related to COVID-19 expenditures. We don't have anybody to testify on this one via Zoom. I'll just note we have received testimony in support. Senate Bill, next Senate Bill, Senate Bill 134 relating to emergency powers. And testimony from Common Cause Hawaii, Sandy Ma. Not present. Okay, next, your testimony from Civil Beat Law Center for the Public Interest, Brian Black.
Good morning Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Brian Black. I'm the Executive Director for the Civil Beat Law Center for the Public Interest. We'll stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the testifiers signed up to testify via Zoom. Any questions? Okay, being done, we're going to move on to Senate Bill 540 relating to emergency rules. First up is Department of the Prosecuting Attorney for the City of Honolulu. Not present. Okay, that's the only one who signed up to testify on SB 540. Senate Bill 1015 relating to the Controller, Dags.
Good morning Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Eli, Kurt Ulter-Grohl, Controller and Director of the Department of accounting and General Services. We appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of Measure SB 1015 and are able to answer any questions that you may have. We believe that initiative is a good opportunity for us to revisit state office leases as well as better utilization of state offices, especially in lieu of the teleworking opportunities that our employees are able to do during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only testimony we received. Member, any questions?
To the last testifier, aren't you guys already doing this other than maybe the telework?
Yes, good morning Representative Ward. We are doing this. I think the purpose of the bill is really to enable the Comptroller's Office to also implement and effect recommendations. Dags today manages approximately 79 facilities statewide, of which about 23 or so on Oahu. But the programs manage their space based on a formula. And so what we find is that the opportunity to look into offices, seeing vacant cubicles, other office spaces where there's, they're used as storage, can be better utilized. And so we need the ability to enforce and actually execute on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Controller. We're going to move to the last bill on the agenda, SB 1034 relating to Sunshine Law Boards. We have testimony from Hawaii Civil Rights Commission. Not present. Testimony from DCCA Professional and Vocational Licensing.
Good morning Chair Ichiyama, Doreen Eddy. On behalf of Professional and Vocational Licensing, we stand on our submitted comments, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony from DLNR.
Good morning Chair, Kevin Moore, DLNR Land Division. The department stands on its written testimony in support, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, testimony from Derek Misuno, UTF. Not present. Okay, testimony from ERS, Thomas Williams. Not present. So next, Common Cause Hawaii, Sandy Ma. Okay, Civil Beat Law Center for the Public Interest, Brian Black.
Good morning Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Black, Executive Director for the Civil Beat Law Center for the Public Interest. Testifying in support, I just want to talk through a couple of issues related to the disability amendments that have been made and just note a couple of things that we identified in the, in our testimony. But just to, just to highlight, one is that OIP doesn't have the expertise to do this. And so to put this on them is a significant strain when they are already working and have difficulty with the work that they already do with respect to government transparency. But we also, the Law Center spent time at the beginning of the pandemic trying to figure out solutions with respect to captioning of remote meetings. And there is no easy solution. It's not, it's not something where you can just flip a switch and, and have captioning. And if, if you can, the quality typically is terrible. So it's, it's better to do captioning on request, and that's, that's the existing law under the ADA and, and other provisions, is that it's on request. And when you do it on request, that allows for a dialogue between the person making the request and the agency to find out what the best solutions are. If this is made too complicated for the boards to implement, they just won't do it. They don't have to do remote technology under this bill. And if you make it too hard for them, they're just not going to do it. And automatic captioning as required by subsection B1 is probably going to make it too burdensome and difficult. Absent of requests, of course, that's different. But just making them caption every single meeting is, is not going to work probably. And they just, they just won't have remote meetings. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Black. I see that Ms. Wirtzall from Hawaii Civil Rights Commission has joined us. We'll jump back to Civil Rights Commission's testimony.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. We are, I assume we're doing Senate Bill 1034. It's just at the end of the, thought I had a few minutes. We are in support of this bill, but would like some clarification from the committee about some of the issues in it. It does create extra work for the boards and for the government agencies, which is difficult at a time when we're losing budget. But I, I have specific questions about the requirement of a public meeting location and how, and exactly what's required. We wanted to know whether the availability of computers at a public library satisfies that requirement or if each agency and board has to provide a room that's open to the public. We have real questions about that because during the pandemic, for instance, our building is still not open, the legislature is still not open. If we do need to put people in a conference room with a laptop, we would need to monitor the laptop so that it doesn't walk out. We didn't know if we needed to have a laptop for each person who comes in or if we need to have technology that will put it up on the wall or on a screen. And, you know, I know that this sounds pretty picky and minor, but as an agency, we would like to comply with it if it goes into law. And we really need to have more clarification on what that means and how to do it and the allocation of resources. For instance, if I'm in charge of a meeting and I'm in my office with all of the other people remote, I have to have another staff member in handling a laptop that may have technical issues and a hotspot to have access to the internet and to make sure that it doesn't walk out. And, you know, I, we just would like some clarity about that. There are other issues that were addressed. We are opposed to the recording postings because that's pretty difficult with Teams, though we could probably change them into WAV files and have a video, an audio recording. Again, you know, I don't know if the legislature is aware, but we don't all have a tech person in our offices. It falls to, in this case, it usually falls to me, and I am the most un-techy person. So, and, and we do not want to be in violation of the sunshine law. So, you know, we would like some clarification of this. You know, we do put our minutes up within 40 days, so I'm not sure why at a time when capacity is being diminished, we would add the requirement of posting recordings. But that's up to the legislature. We really would like clarification on the public meeting site. But stand in support of the bill on the increase of accessibility. We really do, in general, support all of the other sections of the bill, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wirtzall. Okay, let's see. We'll go back to Peter Fritz.
Yes, I'm here. Let me unblock my camera. I'm an individual with a disability. I have requested captioning for many meetings. I've worked with Hawaii Relay to request them. And I just have some concern because in certain cases, if a meeting were to go completely to audio only, I'm totally locked out of the box because I can't always hear everybody that is testifying because of the variety of sound issues. I have been able to make arrangements for captioning for the Tax Review Commission, for other meetings, as well as for the Council on Revenues. So it's not a significant obstacle because it can be done. And I do it upon request. And sometimes I do it ahead of time when I have the information and send that to the Council on Revenue, just simply because it can often be faster. But audio only is going to be a problem. The second thing is I have been attending the meetings of DECAV, which has been providing accommodations for individuals. And because of that, I know that most of the time it works well, but there's nothing in this bill that would allow me to contact somebody after I've made arrangements for captioning and found that the information didn't allow the captioner to enter into the meeting, to contact somebody to try and get the information that would allow me to participate in that meeting. I feel as an individual with a disability, I should be entitled to participate in any meeting, and I'm more than willing to make the arrangement to do so. At another hearing, the National Federation of the Blind Hawaii Chapter commented upon the fact that the technology really needs to be accessible to individuals that use speech-to-text, text-to-speech programs that the blind use in order to participate in the meetings. Zoom is capable of that. So the technology is there. But they also have provisions in this particular law that says that documents can be provided if there's an interruption, and they'll be provided online. And many times, these documents aren't accessible to the individuals who have vision disabilities. This is a requirement. It says there's an administrative directive on it. And what happens if it goes forward and you can't hear it? So it is a concern. But OIP has the technology to produce accessible documents. Their accessible documents are some of the most accessible documents that are published by any agency, at least their newsletters are. So to say that they don't have the technology to do this, they do. And the only way to ensure that everybody is eligible to participate in these meetings is to make sure that the, when requested, and I don't have a problem with requesting an accommodation, that the accommodations are put in place, and if they're not, then it doesn't. But the concern is just that if there is a meeting that recesses and it continues and it goes over time, I won't have my accommodation. I can only book an accommodation, or the agency can only book the accommodation for a specific time period. Once that period is up, if the meeting goes over, I'm now out of the meeting. So there are concerns. I think that the, there should be a provision in this bill that allows for a contact person if there is some sort of technical issue that prevents them from participating. And I also think that based upon Administrative Directive 1206, as well as the requirements of the ADA and ETS, has done a lot of training on accessible documents that, there should be a provision in this law that requires accessible document to be posted because it's already an existing obligation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. If you have any questions regarding the accommodations that I've made or how somebody can make these accommodations, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. And finally, we have late testimony from Cheryl Kakazu-Park, Office of Information Practices.
Aloha, Representative Ichiyama and members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in support of Senate Bill 1035. I'm Cheryl Kakazu-Park, Director of the State Office of Information Practices. Now, the original Senate Bill 1034, sorry, I meant Senate Bill 1034, is the same proposal that this committee previously considered in House Bill 503. OIP has provided detailed written testimony explaining this bill and the Senate amendments, and will now highlight the amendments that OIP is most concerned about, namely the addition of language that apparently creates new causes of action for ADA accessibility type of litigation under the sunshine law and would impose those requirements on the additional locations that could be provided for the public's convenience during remote meetings. I agree with Brian Black's testimony that this would have an adverse impact on the accessibility or public access to meetings if enacted as proposed with the Senate amendments. Accessibility rights are already ensured under other state and federal laws administered by other agencies. And OIP does not have the expertise or personnel to add another layer of administration or enforcement of such rights in the sunshine law itself. Adding these new requirements at the expense of having to terminate the official meeting if the accessible technology fails at additional locations would discourage boards from conveniently expanding access for the public during remote meetings. Therefore, to encourage greater public access and to avoid confusion, government inefficiency, and potential conflicts between laws and agencies, OIP recommends that the accessibility provisions added in Senate draft one be removed from the sunshine law measure. I know that there was some talk about OIP having great accessibility, accessible documents on its website. Thank you very much for that compliment. But we're not the ones that are doing the sunshine law meetings that would be bombed by these provisions. So if there are going to be any accessibility issues, I think it should be handled by the agencies that are already charged with administering existing laws and not creating new rights under the sunshine law itself for OIP to have to administer. I do note that the current law already does provide, it's not in the bill itself because it's already in the law, that the meeting notice must contain instructions on how to request an auxiliary aid or service or accommodation due to a disability. So that is already in the existing laws. I don't think you need much more than that. It puts people on notice that if they need some kind of accommodation, they can request it in advance. And this law, we don't need to create any more new causes of action that would jeopardize the sunshine law or continue to burden the sunshine law boards with brand-new provisions. So anyway, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Park. Members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Mr. Fritz, please.
Okay, I think I'm back.
You, you're, you can hear me okay, right?
You can hear me okay, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was.
I also have the captions playing.
In fact, that was my very point. You said you should have a live translator. What about the captions? I was reading your words and they seem pretty ninety-five percent accurate. Is that sufficient or you still want a live translator who when the meeting is supposed to end ends and you're kind of left in the lurch?
My problem with the live captioning, at least on Facebook. YouTube. Is that YouTube rewrites and many of the automatic captioning, you'll be reading it and then you'll have to read it again and rewrite it. There are a number of problems with automatic captioning and I prefer. To have a live captioner. It's just more accurate and there's not the burden of having to reread things. I would like to add something, though. I'm the one that proposed having every single. Notice have language in there saying that individuals can request an accommodation because many times they did not. And OIP objected to it. The burden of providing accessible documents is upon the agency. If an agency doesn't do that, I think I should be able to go to OIP and explain why that didn't happen. And OIP in particular is. Responsible for accessibility for everyone, including individuals with disabilities from like me, so. The burden is that I would issue a complaint. To someone. And it would explain why there was a problem. The other issue that comes to mind is the fact that. I cannot continue with a captioner. After it's over. But it's very possible to do many things and participate in these meetings and have accessibility. So it's not something that's a great burden. And I just think anyone with a disability should be able to participate. And remote captioning opens that up to a lot of people, but it's going to close off a lot of people that have hearing disabilities or a heart of hearing. If they can't get good captioning. So anybody who reads the captions and saying it does a pretty good job should really try following some hearing on. YouTube with the sound off and see just how good the captionings are. Does that address your concern?
More than enough, Mr. Fritz. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cheryl.
And members, any other question? Quick question for OIP or Ms. Park. Hi. What is the current procedure if. Someone with a disability needs to access the meeting? And let's say they run into any challenges or issues. What is the normal or what is the current practice when something like that happens?
All we require under the sunshine law, which is something we didn't object to is is that the notice say how you're going to request. You know, an accommodation. And so we we tell people, if you have any questions, go to DCA because they're the ones that have the expertise. And resources to help people find the right type of accommodations that they need. So we're out of it after that. We just require the notice to state how to go about asking for this. We don't deal. As an agency with disability issues because that is not our expertise. We refer them out to usually to DCA.
And then if somebody like they they tried to get access, but were not able to. There is, what is their remedy? To seek relief in court? Or file a complaint?
Would probably go to the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission or the federal. Federal agency that administers the ADA. Depending on whether it's a federal or state violation.
But they wouldn't file a complaint currently with OIP. Is that correct?
No, because it's not, we don't, we don't have any, you know. Causes of action based on this. You know, access provisions. It's just the only thing we have is. Whether or not you have in your notice the instructions for requesting accommodation, that's cut and dry, yes or no? But when you start getting into. New causes of action, now we have to figure out. Do we have to enforce it? Is there going to be a problem? If there's a if there's a violation, does that mean then that the entire? That the board's final action can be voided? You know, does it and does that depend on the person? Who actually requested an accommodation, bringing that action to void? The board's ultimate decision? I mean, you can, it can open up a whole new can of worms if we have to get involved. In administering accessibility issues. Under the sunshine law itself. The sunshine law has a whole different. You know, enforcement mechanism from the ADA. Those things, that law, whatever those remedies are. Are under those laws, but now you're creating. You would be potentially creating something under the sunshine law itself and we would have to figure out what that means.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Park.
Thank you.
Members, any other question? Okay, being done, we're going to assess for decision making, recess. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for your patience. We are reconvening the Committee on Pandemic and Disaster Preparedness. To conduct decision making on our nine AM agenda. First up is Senate Bill 1109, Senate Draft Two relating to the State Disaster Recovery Program. Members, we noted the testimony. Of Haima and we are going to. Take a look at whether or not this disaster recovery coordinator position should actually be a part. Of the entire disaster recovery response effort. So we're going to move the position to Haima and have a report to the administrator. And there's going to be technical nonsubstantive amendments and the bill is already defected. Are there any questions?
Being done, I'll have to have one. Chair's recommendation surpass SB 1109 SD two with amendments. Chairman Vice Chair, I, Representative Cullen. Representative McKelvey. Representative Mizuno. Representative Waldberger.
I.
Representative Watson.
I.
Representative Yamaschita. Representative Ward. Your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, moving on to Senate Bill 1107. Senate Draft Two relating to Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. We're going to do the same thing we did with the House version, which is to do a clarifying amendment that the fund is going to be in a. New section under 127A rather than modifying the existing section. It has a defective date and amendments.
I'm sorry.
Members, any question?
I should have one. Chair's recommendation surpass SB 1107 SD two with amendments. Any reservations? Any notes? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Members, for Senate Bill 266, Senate Draft Two. We're going to make a number of amendments. We're going to insert a part two. We're going to insert the contents of House Bill 1286, House Draft Two. We're going to insert a part three. That any FEMA reimbursements for COVID-19. Response shall go to the general fund instead of the major disaster trust. And so that will be notwithstanding any contract provisions in 127A. We're also going to transfer from the DoD Trust Account T908. The amount of seven million nine hundred sixty-two, two hundred fifty-six, sixty cents. To the general fund as COVID-related prior reimbursements. Technical nonsubstantive amendments and the bill currently has a defective date of July 1, 2015. Remember comments and questions?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I think it's too a little too early in my mind to give up the conversation on House Bill 1286, which is in the Senate, so. Because of that, I'll be respectfully going now.
Thank you.
Seeing up for the comment. Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 266 SD two with amendments. I have Representative McKelvey voting no. Any reservations? Any other knows? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Voting on Senate Bill 117, Senate Draft Two, this is emergency appropriation to the Office of the Governor. I wanted to note. That we're going to clarify. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Senate Bill 1117. We're going to note that any federal reimbursements shall go to the general fund similar to what we did with the other other bill. And then technical nonsubstantive amendments. I'm also going to note in the committee report for the Finance Committee to look at that there may be a potential title issue with Section Six. This bill currently has a defective date. Members, any question? Okay.
I should have one. Thank you. Chair's recommendation surpass SB 1117 SD two with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Next, Senate Bill 134 relating to emergency powers. We're going to clarify. That. The power to suspend. The power for the governor, the mayor to suspend laws under HRSS 127A dash thirteen. Paragraph three will not conflict with this exemption that we are creating. Other technical nonsubstantive amendments and we're going to. I note this bill already has a defective date. Any question?
I should have one. Chair's recommendation has passed SB 134 SD one with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is about there.
Thank you, members. Moving on to Senate Bill 540, Senate Draft One relating to emergency rules. Just going to note upfront, technical nonsubstantive amendments and please bear with me their number of changes that need to be made. In Section Seven, we're going to authorize the judiciary to send out notices via email. Instead of requiring it, so we're changing those shouts to "may" in Section Seven. Page eighteen, line sixteen through seventeen, we're going to clarify that. The district court has the power to conduct emergency period infraction hearings. We're going to add. A new section to amend 291D dash seven subsection D to add emergency period infraction. And then on page seven, line twenty, page eight, line five. We're going to take the prosecutors clarifying amendments on the amending the definition of hearing to include the emergency period infractions. The bill, let's see, I think that's it. Are there any other, are there any question?
Okay, seeing that. Chair's recommendation surpass SB 540 SD one with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Senate Bill 1015, Senate Draft Two. We're going to add an annual reporting requirement to the legislature on the requirements that are sent out in the bill so that we know how we're doing on. Decreasing our our footprint. We're also going to put in a requirement of a twenty-five percent decrease. In the square footage that the state is leasing by July 1, 2026. So that we have a benchmark to measure against. There's also going to be technical nonsubstantive amendments. That's it. Members, any question?
Chair's recommendation surpass SB 115 SD two with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, last bill. Senate Bill 1034, Senate Draft One relating to Sunshine Law Board. A friend, I'm sorry, members of those, a lot of amendments this bill involved, but we're going to do technical nonsubstantive amendments. On page six, line 13, we're going to restore to the original language, one hour to return to a meeting if there's technical difficulties. We are going to revise page three, line 17 for remote meetings that the, the physical meeting location be made available if it is requested by a member of the public. It's not required to be available at every meeting. It's only if requested 72 hours prior to the meeting. We're also going to take the OIP amendments to restore the original language of the bill on additional sites and deleting the Senate Draft One changes on pages four, six, and eight. You know, I also really take, take the points of OIP very, very is very pertinent that ADA accessibility should be under Decap and Hawaii Civil Rights Commission and not under OIP. So noting that these accessibility requirements are already covered in federal law, we're going to delete the ADA accessibility requirements out in SD one and also insert language in the committee report to explain that it's already covered in other parts of federal law and that other agencies should be enforcing these requirements.
Chair, question?
Yep.
But was it Mr. Fritz's point that it's already on the books, but is not being enforced? Maybe that could be a committee report point. That was his whole point about it's on the books, but it's not being enforced. It's not being followed.
I think that's very well taken. Seeing other questions or comments?
Okay. Chair's recommendation surpass SB 1034 SD one with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Appreciate your time. We're good.